Okay, it's 9:01. Want to call this meeting to order? Sackler.
Here.
Delosier.
Here.
Halem.
Here.
Commissioner Delosier, would you please lead us to the place of leave?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Halem, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that we received today. Father, we pray for those in Egypt, for the God of the unrest that's over there. Lord, may you have a calming factor on it. Lord, and may you bless the people. Bless our men and women that serve for our freedom. And God, thank you for protecting the United States of America, for it's in Christ, and we pray. Thank you.
Item number five, approve disproved minutes, August 12. Hold on one second. On the minutes. I had a note on page two. It says that we took the vote on item number nine. And then it says we recessed. If memory serves me, we didn't recess before we took the vote. So those two items need to be switched.
On number nine?
Motion to change.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six, new business. Do we have any? Okay, item seven, announcements. We do have a special meeting today at 1:30 PM to open bids on demolition of the courthouse. Are there any other announcements? Okay, I'd like to move, if we could, to item number 22. Discussion, possible action regarding the executive session. Rogers County case number CJ 2006-684, Board of County Commissioners, Rogers County versus John Stephen Jennings. Well, actually, number 20, I'm sorry. Discussion, possible action to enter executive session pursuant to Oklahoma statute Title 25 and 307B4 for the purpose of confidential communications between a public body and its attorney concerning pending investigation, claim or action if the public body with the advice of its attorney determines that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation or proceeding in the public interest to and Rogers County. Case number CJ 2006-684, Board of County Commissioners, Rogers County versus John Stephen Jennings. I'll make a motion. Well, Mr. Iskey, is this, do you advise to go into executive session?
Yes, Commissioner, again.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we enter executive session.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
9:05.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn executive session and re-enter regular session. 9:07.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 22, discussion, possible action regarding the executive session item, Rogers County case, CJ 2006-684, Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County versus John Stephen Jennings. I'm going to make a motion to amend our petition to pursuant to landowner's request to preserve his gates and county's engineer's recommendation to reduce taking satisfying right-of-way requirements.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item, well, it's number two on my list. We need to nominate someone, one of us, to settle this case.
Make a motion that we authorize the chair one. And to satisfy the case with seven minutes authority.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem. Motion carries.
Okay, and number three on my list, we need to renew Mr. Ritchie's contract for fiscal year 2013-2014.
Is that a motion?
Yes. It's under, it's under item number 22.
Just lost you for a minute. Okay, Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Anything further on that? Please, Mr. Ritchie. Okay, move back in your agendas to item number eight. Unfinished business, discussion, possible action on feasibility of the healthy survival of two existing large trees located next to the old courthouse during demolition and preparation of the site for parking and other plans for that area. This item was tabled from August the 5th and August the 12th. Do you have a, something from the architect CD? Okay. I spoke with Kim Reeves, I don't think he's in here, last week. He talked about the expense of all the items that would have to be taken care of according to O.S.U.'s study on that. Do you guys have any further discussion or? And he didn't give me hard numbers, it was just expensive. Anybody got anything?
With the, with the assessment here, yes, you can protect them, yes, you can take it out. There was no hard evidence that said that once we took it out, planted it elsewhere, that with survival rate of it, no one can guarantee a survival. They can do everything they can about prepping it and planting it. But again, for the age of the tree and the planting of the tree, all that could be good, but no telling about survival.
Well, you know, when they added on to the old courthouse, I'm going to assume that they cut the trees down at that point. I mean, there's nothing really special about these trees. Will Rogers never tied his horse to one? I think we're just taking them out and planting new trees. I'll make a motion to that effect.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, discussion, possible action regarding the follow-up of E911 addressing establishment accounts, Mr. Halem, Mr. Halem, this item was tabled from August 12. Mr. Halem.
I would ask that I have another week to work on this. We've gotten into number crunching and there were some people that were out, so I need another week if I could, please.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, open award bid number 623, adjustable console furniture for Rogers County Dispatch Center, Jan Hamilton, this item was tabled from August 12 to 2013. Director Hamilton.
I request that we table this for one more week.
Okay. Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number four, under unfinished business, open an award bid number 624, dispatch protocol, emergency medical dispatch, emergency fire dispatch, emergency police dispatch for Rogers County's consolidated dispatch center. Five workstations, Jan Hamilton, this item was tabled from August 12 to 2013.
Here again, I request that this be tabled for one more week.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then item number 11, roads and bridges memorandum of agreement with Cherokee Nation of Rogers County for road bridge construction projects. This is the annual agreement that we signed with Cherokee Nation. Questions? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We all signed it, so we'll do it. Item number 14, utility permits, number one, Chelsea Gas Authority boring to cross county highway, local road in foil, south Andy Payne Boulevard, approximately .20 miles of south Highway 66 or 924 feet south of Third Street, further described as 1,500 feet southeast of the northwest corner of section 32, township 23, north range 17 east. Commissioner Delosier.
Mr. Curtis.
This is a boring in the town of Chelsea for a gas line under new road.
It's the town foil.
Oh, sorry, foil. Chelsea Gas.
Chelsea Gas, the town foil. It is a boring. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we have anything under item 15?
No.
Item number 16, blanket purchase orders.
Do have three.
Would you read those for me?
Yes.
Write it, please.
Yes, sir. District one, RNS Auto Parts Chelsea for $350. District three, Walmart for $100. And Rogers County Fair Board to Claremore Expo Center for $3,000.
Oh, the three you said?
Yes.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Jackson, is that one, item one only? No number two? Orders exceed?
Yes, number one only.
Okay, number, item number 17, grants, resolution authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund. Commissioner Delosier.
This is, on new business last week, I brought in a REAP grant application for Skoye Public Schools. This is the resolution I wanted to bring to a regular meeting. It didn't have to be in, just the application. So this is, this is the resolution to work with Skoye Public Schools on REAP grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Through, it's through Grand Gate, I'm sorry.
Item number 19, agenda, item number one, update by BKL Incorporated of Flint County regarding courthouse in 991, set of projects. No update. Item number two, resignation of Casey E. Reed from Excise Board, this is acknowledgement only. Item number three, county clerk cashbook and summary report.
Motion to approve.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number four, monthly report of officers. Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let's do item number five, six, seven, and eight, and nine, together. Resolution for disposing of equipment, county clerk, electronic cash register ID 243.2 to be jumped. Eight Monroe calculators ID 203.16 through 203.23 to be jumped. Three Nova desks, no ID number, these are to be jumped. Partner phone system ID 603.1 through 603.17 to be jumped. And three Ultron label makers ID 247.1 through 247.3 also to be jumped. Motion to approve?
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the desks, can they not be sold or given to an entity? Are they the desks over in the hallway, do you know where they're?
I don't know which ones they are. Nelson might know.
Nelson?
Are those the Nova desks already there?
I don't know what's, you know, many people are grabbing things up out, I don't know, but they were, I guess.
But if they're junked, they can, they can be given away, I would think. Mr. Iskey?
I'm trying to look my head, I'm going to say junk to be available to anyone.
Motion to approve for number five through nine.
Are you second?
No, did we?
Good, yeah.
Yeah.
Halem, second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let's do item 10 and 11 again, the resolution for disposing of equipment. District two, 2009 Chevy four-by-four crew cab pickup, serial number reflected in your agenda, this is to be sold at auction at McAllister September 21st. And a 2008 Chevy Silverado pickup, serial number reflected in your agenda, also to be sold at auction September the 21st, 2013. Commissioner Halem.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 12, resolution for disposing of equipment, E911, addressing a 97 Ford Crown Vic, serial number reflected in your agenda, this is to be sold at auction September 21st, 2013. Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item number 13, A through K, resolution for disposing of equipment, emergency management. A 1977 Dodge halftime four-by-four, serial, the serial numbers are all reflected in your agenda. This is to be sold at auction, a 1971 Gamma Goat, 1998 Crown Victoria, 1971 Chevrolet, Chevrolet GMC, two-ton, to be jumped. A 77 Chevrolet two-ton with emergency, with emergency ops center on the side, to be jumped. A 1992 Ford Taurus, junk. Chevrolet Capri, junk. Winnebago, junk. Chevy Caprice, junk. 93 model Ford Crown Victoria, junk. 1990 Chevrolet Caprice, also to be jumped. Discussion?
I've got one question. All of these vehicles that are being jumped, is there a salvage value on these vehicles?
Sir? Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Starks, visiting, I've got this, a lot of these are going to, they're not running, and they're going to do, like, let them practice with the jaws of life, you know? And they're going to be using these vehicles, most of the lovely vehicles for that, for these emergency people to check, to work on them. And then, after that, then they'll probably be, you know, they could be.
Jumped.
Jumped after that, but that's their intention.
Just so you know, a lot of these cars already have parts that have been borrowed off of them previously, and like Nelson said, they, they don't run, practice for fire departments and things, so.
Do we need, Nelson, this is probably for you, we need to follow some type of protocol on selling these vehicles for junk after this is done, correct?
It'd be my suggestion that you, we can do, follow the quotes, much like we do appeal to the, you know, people that buy scrap iron and stuff, and then you should do that thing.
Any further discussion on item 13?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 14, reimbursement and resolution, 2014-23 to deposit funds of $16,921.47 into one cent M and O, 83ST 200 for travelers, District three. Gentlemen, this is an insurance reimbursement check on a wrecked dump truck, and we received that in the other day. Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 15, reimbursement and resolution, 2014-24 to deposit funds of $20 into cemetery restitution fund, number 91-210 for a bull, District one.
Okay, this is cemetery restitution. I have no idea what a bull is about, but it's, it's simply a cemetery restitution from a cemetery that was destroyed, and this is, he's paying his restitution, I guess, as he, as he. Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 16, reimbursement and resolution, 2014-24 to deposit funds of $332.25 into M and O, number 20-200 for Rogers County Health Department.
That's actually 25.
Yeah.
You said 24.
Where? Oh, it is 25. My mistake, typo on my part.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 17, reimbursement and resolution, 2014-26, deposit funds, $5,206 into 04-400 Sheriff General Fund travel, for travelers insurance. You know about that?
It was brought to me by Pam, through.
Insurance reimbursement for.
Oh, there it is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier. Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 18, discussion, possible action for regarding, action regarding hiring Bill Turner, CPA to prepare financial statement. Your names on it?
This was brought to me by Angela Owen from the Trade Office, and saying that the auditor is, now saying that, that the county needs to prepare its own financial statement. They've always helped in the past with preparing financial statements, they no longer do that. Angela was, I think she's on vacation, that's why she's not here. The purpose of this, she has talked to Bill Turner about preparing the financial statement, and so I just went in and put it on the agenda so, you know, we'd, we'd know what was going on, whether we want to hire him to do it, or if somebody else, it really doesn't matter, but this will have to be prepared every year from now on, and we have to, the county has to be the one to do it, so.
Since we're doing our budget, I don't have a motion that we hired Bill for this.
He did say he would, he thought it would take in the range of $1,000. He's been doing these for other counties, and it takes about, he said about $1,000 for it to be prepared.
My second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 19, discussion, possible action regarding changing the ten, is that supposed to be ten or pin?
It should be ten, capital T, capital I, capital N, tax identification.
Oh, tax identification number.
I believe that's the intention.
Okay. For the LEPC account to the ten number for Rogers County. Director Stokes is in a class today. Is anyone speaking?
Mr. Karen, he asked me to speak on behalf of this.
Ms. Randy Palmer.
Thank you. We met last week for our second meeting and voted, made a motion to bring before you to see if there is a tax identification number associated with the account that's at the bank, and it's not the Rogers County tax identification number. Wanted to bring it before you to see if we should move it to the Rogers County tax identification number, or if possibly we should proceed to do our own, or whatever your suggestions are on this matter.
My suggestion is to, the number that you've already got, you probably need to check into that just a little bit more. We talked before the meeting, and it was, you know, I, I don't know that that, I don't know that that can be the county ID number, I mean, we can use county tax number on that. I think that's a, kind of a, like a private account. Mr. Iskey?
I would agree with everything you said, it shouldn't, based upon what I know right now, change facts, change the answer, but based upon what I know right now, since that is not a county organization, it's a separate organization, the identification number comes from the IRS, which is directed to a particular agency, and for those reasons, I agree with everything you've said.
If you look on, and look into the number a little farther, you might find out that that's what you need anyways.
I'll let him know.
Okay, did you want to take any action on that?
Don't you deny it, or take a vote to approve or deny at this time, you can always add it. Again, on.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we've already took care of items number 20, 21, and 22. Item number 23, discussion, possible action to enter executive session pursuant to Oklahoma statute Title 25 and 307B4 for the purpose of confidential communications between a public body and its attorney concerning a pending investigation, claim, or action if the public body with the advice of its attorney determines that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest to an unauthorized entry into the old county courthouse on July 31st, 2013. Mr. Iskey, is this an item that you recommend going into executive session over?
I would so recommend.
Okay.
Second.
Sackler.
Aye.
Delosier.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
We entered regular, or executive session at 9:50. We'll be back. We'll be back.
Hey Theresa. Can I have a copy of that resolution for support schools to take back to them after the investigation?
You want? You need a copy of that? You can't read my writing? I can't read my writing?
I must guess that's how we're considered about my letter. Eighty-three.
It's ten thirty-nine. Make motion to adjourn the executive session to reenter regular session. Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier? Hail?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number twenty-five, discussion of possible action regarding executive session. Item unauthorized entry into the old county courthouse, July thirty-first, twenty thirteen.
Chairman, make a motion that we do an investigation, unauthorized entry into the old courthouse, old Rogers County courthouse on July thirty-first, twenty thirteen by the DA's office.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Can I ask you a s... The way that was worded, it almost sounds like the district attorney was the unauthorized person. Who do you want to do the investigation?
I'm, I'm asking that the DA's office do the criminal investigation of an unauthorized entry into the old courthouse, Rogers County courthouse on July thirty-first, twenty thirteen.
That was my second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number twenty, announcements regarding county events and status updates for comments and discussion from county departments and elected officials as follows. Nine-one-one Administrator, Director Hamilton.
On Thursday of this past week, we did have our kickoff meeting with Motorola and, um, we do have a schedule of Motorola's needs. Bottom line is that their anticipated completion cut over date to us is December the twentieth. As you know, that is the Christmas season. Anyway, the, uh, Tuesday, we are meeting, the trust authority, nine-one-one Trust Board members are meeting on Tuesday and I do have a conference call with Presidio, AT&T, and Cox for connecting to the PBX and the nine-one-one system and the internet and that's all nine-one-one has.
Any questions, Dylan? Thank you, Director Hamilton. Assessor? Building operations? Mr. Bayes, you in here? Uh, county clerk?
Nothing.
Court clerk?
Nothing.
District Attorney's Office?
Elections.
Election Board?
Oh, sorry. The, um, we finalized the election on Friday and the numbers came back at two thousand four hundred and twenty were yes and one thousand three hundred and ninety-five were no. We certified that on Friday.
What does that break down to percentage-wise?
I have not figured that out, but I would figure that out next month.
Next week.
Be glad to.
Thank you, ma'am. Emergency management? He is going for a... Rain class, human resources, Chief Director Bennett.
The wellness survey goes out today. Um, they'll be handed out to all the departments. Um, there'll be instructions, um, there, to remain anonymous, no one needs to put their name on them. Give your courthouse, if the office in the courthouse just put them in my employment allocation box downstairs or in the county clerk's office, I have a mailbox there. Um, I wish not to receive them by hand unless you have a group of them. I don't want to know who's associated with them. Uh, the county barns and the sheriff's office that are off property, if you can just put them in one big envelope and send them back to me, that would be great. And they're due back by Friday. That's it.
Questions? IT? Planning Commission, Director Curtis.
Um, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board completed their CAF community assistance visit of Rogers County and I have met and discussed, um, shortly with Matt Rollins with OWRB. We will have, be having a formal meeting in September about their report. The Planning Commission will be having a meeting tomorrow with two agenda items. Uh, one is in District Two, the other one is District Three. The Board of Adjustment has three agenda items, uh, one is in each district.
Okay, any questions for Director Curtis? OSU extension?
Nothing.
Thank you, ma'am. Sheriff's Office?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. And Treasurer? Okay. Item number twenty-one, do we have anything? Item number twenty-two, public comments and responses from board members.
Russell Gill Foyle.
If you would stand up so everybody can hear you sort of...
Russell Gill Foyle, two-one-eight-two-two, South Eatonville Road, Claremore, Oklahoma, seven-four-zero-one-nine. I'd like to address your twenty-five under agenda items there. And, uh, I'm not totally familiar with this unauthorized entry into the old county courthouse or anything that happened there. But from my perspective, this would be an individual entering a county building. That'd be kind of like walking across Claremore Lake. And since we're having an investigation of someone doing that where, where there was no forcible entry, would it be possible to have the DA also investigate who was responsible for the security of that building? You know, like putting, if there was something confidential in there, who was responsible for putting a padlock on that door to prevent that? If, and we're probably not going to have that investigation, but if we did and it showed that was, I mean, because this committee, county commissioner seems to have authority over it or accepting it. If it shows that there was an individual, any of you, individually or jointly, that put these records, this building, that should have been secured, at risk through that investigation, I would respectfully request that you resign your position for the security of the people of Rogers County.
Is that a question or just a statement? Okay, thanks, sir. Any other public comments? Ms. Celecia Wilkens?
Okay, I have a number of questions. First of all, um, as far as you guys giving the DA's office authority to open a criminal investigation, um, has there been an investigation into this matter up to this point?
We can't comment due to a pending criminal investigation.
So your discussion with me three weeks ago about this matter, were you telling me that they were already investigating? That didn't occur? I mean, they're not investigating already at this point?
We asked the DA's office to continue and conduct a criminal investigation into unauthorized entry into the courthouse.
And is it the normal procedure of this board to give the DA's office permission to have a criminal investigation?
We asked them to conduct it and they agreed.
Okay, and is there an investigation into why those records were not secured?
It's maybe part of the investigation. I couldn't comment on that.
Okay, and whose records were they?
It's a pending investigation. You can ask it a hundred different ways. You're going to get the same answer. We can't comment on it at this time.
Have all the records been accounted for?
That's item, that's question way number five.
And, um, have they been moved and have, or have they been disposed of?
There's a pending criminal investigation and we can't comment on this time or at this time.
And has, um, ADA Iskey been questioning and collecting statements from county employees on this investigation?
You got, either change your line of questioning because we're not going to comment on a pending criminal investigation. If you want to ask about something else, please feel free, you got about one minute left.
What, um, state statute authorized, authorized you to have this executive session on a criminal matter, not a matter of the board?
I don't know, I guess we'll read about it in the paper. Are there any other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Aldra Flood?
Oh. And it's about the trespassing issue. I know on the previous meeting that you had stated that you felt like the door had been dropped open.
Till it hurt.
And is that part of your investigation? And was that a county employee?
That's part of the investigation, I suppose, but I can't comment on that.
Okay. One other question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, up to this point, do you believe that there's more than one trespasser in the building on that particular occasion?
I couldn't comment on that either. There's a pending investigation. Mr. Bailey Dabney?
Do you, um, expect the DA's office to recuse themselves from this investigation since the director's involved, involved them and since they're involved with legal matters with the person that you're accusing of, of trespassing?
First of all, no one's name was ever mentioned about, under unauthorized entry.
Okay.
There's been lots of assumptions made, but I suppose that the DA's office would recuse themselves. I mean, that's standard procedure. I mean, I hope that answers your question. Any other comments, public, uh, or public comments, questions? We'll give everybody plenty of time. I know, uh... Mr. Aldra Flood?
Yes. I know that you made a statement in a previous meeting about that you thought this was a set-up deal by individuals. Do you still have that contention?
Now that there is a ongoing criminal investigation, I can't comment on that. Of course, I've never been one to hold back.
Well, I knew that you were, uh, not reluctant to state your opinion, that's why I...
Not usually. But I think in, in light of, of what is, is occurring here, I think it would be better just to wait until the outcome of that investigation and then, but believe me, I'd sure like to talk. Ms. Wilkens, do you have another question?
I do, I just would like to know who, um, requested this item be placed on the agenda.
Anybody want to answer that? I don't know.
You don't know?
No.
Commissioner Delosier, do you know?
Do I know? Who, who put it on there? The DA's office put it on there.
Thank you.
Is that your last question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more? All righty, here we go. Item number twenty-three, payment of purchase orders from all departments. Apparently they didn't stay for the purchase, rather than the purchase order. I thought that's what the crowd was for.
That's what I thought.
I never can predict what people are here for. Mark, how's things been going for you?
Oh, not too bad.
I didn't see him sitting down there.
No, stayed kind of quiet.
He didn't jump up and run out there, buddy else.
What do you know?
Hi, Miss, I think, how are you?
Pretty good. Hi. When you're signing, I have a suggestion to offer. I think when you cut down those trees, you should take the wood and have it planted into either desks or cart benches for the new car or something like that. Because that'd be a way of preserving it and...
I'll tell you what I actually was thinking. Was cutting about ten foot off the bottom and carving little...
A chainsaw.
I know they do the chainsaw things, but I just think that since they have been there a long time and people have feelings about them, you could figure out a way to remember them in some way. That's, that's my suggestion.
We could cut that down and then move it up closer to where it's supposed to be and make little Rogers cars with Rogers in it. Standing, standing little Rogers.
I think it needs to be outside somewhere.
Thanks, thank you. Crazy as possible.
Dan, have you heard from the architect on the, on the plans of what the plaza will look like? Not yet.
Well, since he's not in charge of that, Mark, I'll answer that for you.
Oh, he's, okay.
Don't get me in trouble.
He is designing the, uh, the plans, uh, well, actually they're designed. But he was waiting to see what we would do with the trees. And that's, and I didn't, I forgot to mention it in the meeting, but we lose that one tree to design around, we lose about eight spaces. That other tree we lost, he said probably three and perhaps four. So that was...
The south side of the...
Yeah, the south side trees. It's, he said three if possible or four. He might could squeeze one space in there and then we'd lose eight, uh, with this one that's out front here. And, and, and I didn't say that in the meeting, I wasn't thinking about, but that is part of the reason that, oh, it's trees, you know? Which is, which is more valuable, the tree or the parking? And we're all planting trees.
Yeah.
And like I said, Will Rogers never tied his horse up good, it's only thirty years old.
As long as there's still trees, I feel like it's, there will be trees then.
You know, we're working with OSU Extension. I mean, they're gonna, they're helping us with all free, by the way. They're helping us design an entire landscape, uh, designed out here. Trees that, you know, we have to look on down the road, like, uh, that tree there, there are certain trees, the roots will grow up under the sidewalks and the foundations and things, so, so they have to be sized appropriate.
Okay.
But we have, we have kind of kicked around the idea of maybe a chainsaw sculpture out of the, you know, do something with them because they're, they're big nice oak trees. do something with them because they're, they're big, nice oak trees.
And then the meeting at one thirty is to discuss the demolition bids, is that correct?
Open them.
Open them, okay.
We'll see. Maybe there's a new stack. Yeah, we're gonna open them up and, you know, depending on what comes in, I mean, we may, we may award it or we may table it, it's hard to say, till we see. If anyone bids, I mean, that, that seems to be an issue. I gotta ask you a question now.
Yeah.
Are we really that excited to have two, two reporters cover?
I guess, I guess so.
Man, I'll tell you what, why don't you come ride around with me for a day?
It's not that exciting to.
It'll bore you to tears. I mean, it's more fun watching grass grow or paint dry.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's gotta be some excitement for you guys to get. It's to see all this.
You know what excites me?
What?
Building a new bridge.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm serious, our, our, they talk about our country's infrastructure in such bad shape and, you know, how many bridges in Oklahoma, and all three of us have built, you know, new bridges, and I mean, those are expensive. It's one thing just to go blacktop a mile of road, if you start building bridges, I mean, here you are. You're talking some serious money, and then every time a school bus goes over it or, you know, semi or a farm tractor, we're not worried about caving in or, I mean, that's just a good feeling, now, to me, that's exciting.
Yeah. The landowner that you were talking about?
Yes, sir.
John Steven Jennings? Is he the guy that's in Catusa?
Yeah, yeah, I told that Ry Street Bridge, right, by Reesers, he's the one, they're on the, either north side of Ry Street. So we kind of changed it up a little bit, trying to comply with his, with his wishes to get this thing. Because you know what a big deal that is, you've been to the Catusa meetings?
Yeah.
The folks over there want that bridge, they can avoid the Catusa Valley deathway down there.
Right.
To the south, that X thing, I don't know. I call it the Catusa Valley deathway. It's, I'm sure it makes sense when it was designed fifty years ago.
Uh-huh.
Well, what do you call it? You know what I'm talking about. Done?
Cloverleaf?
No, it's not a cloverleaf. It comes, it's an X, the, the road sixty-six runs and then it comes at an angle. You're fine to see it one way, but when you try to look back over your shoulder, you can't see oncoming traffic. I don't know how many racks they have down there. But there's a bid letting in November. Excuse me, for that, for that Spunky Creek Bridge, or Ry Street Bridge, we call it Spunky Creek, what's it is? But, yeah, there's a whole neighborhood back there that uses, that would use that bridge to get down to.
Oh, yeah, it'd be a lot.
Reesers, that will take a lot of traffic off of sixty-six, so we're excited. Mike got it started back in, when was it?
Two thousand and six.
In oh-six, ran into some problems with right away, but now, I mean, now, you know, when we did redistricting, I just took that project over. Finally, he started it, but I get to look like the hero.
But the Jennings guy, he's not had, he doesn't have any issues now with it?
Well.
But you guys.
I don't know, because the, the attorney, Mr. Ritchie, he will go out, you know, make them, make them offer and find out if. What we did, the engineer reduced the footprint of the bridge and the right away so that it wouldn't take in this gentleman's fence and, and some other, you know, security cameras, different things, whatever he's got out there, I don't know. So basically, we just scooted it a little to the south and, and then just reduced the footprint. So we're hoping that he'll think that's a good idea. But I mean, you know, the bridge is still going to be built. Because of the November letting, because we stepped out of the, you know, there's less taking, if you will.
Thanks for sticking around.
See y'all. Thanks, guys.
See you, ma'am.
See ya.
I want to make sure I'm clear, the vote you guys took on the executive session was to authorize them to investigate? Or what was the wording?
We asked them to investigate.
Asked them to investigate, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Well, not too many more.
She starts saying.
Shall we get to it?
She starts saying that about three hundred left to go.
We haven't had enough all the way to one thing, but we're close.
That's what we went from closing the plaza, well, I'm not charged over it.
I just count down to seven, I'm getting my shit.
Oh, you're a peach.
TV commercials? Why are you standing there?
I have had TV commercials. We know, Dylan.
Well, we got a meeting at one thirty, remember?
I know, I made that announcement.
Oh, I know, just remind everybody, I got four bids, talked to BJ, he was expecting that we'd get five.
Really?
And that, that's all you could get, I think, or five, he was giving you that.
Six.
There was six. He was expecting for the five, but I'm not pulling.
Good. Firework, they're done, aren't they?
When's the deadline?
One.
One, yeah, you could end up with another one by, by one o'clock.
The meetings, uh, not till one thirty, but yeah, they got to one o'clock.
Around here in the same place.
Same place, same station. Are you climbing that fishing line this weekend?
Did you catch that?
We had a blowout, gone. Okay. Larry. We had a brand new spare bits, flat, didn't even know it, it was up in the deal, you know how they lay. So, the blowout was a back tire on a dual trailer. We couldn't leave it that way, so we jacked it up, take that tire off, take the other tire off, move it to the back, and work with it.
Here she comes.
Anyway, we, we were about out.
Make your nerves hurt?
Well, but, you know, if you messed around a little bit, it didn't bring me, I thought we were finished.
I was trying to get my stuff in there.
Yeah.
We were about out of light.
Hour and a half was the best.
You're probably a good move.
Where'd you go?
Did you win?
No, I heard we did terrible.
Oh.
We made it pretty good, we, we were like seventh overall.
We need to halt to break some of them, then you could turn loose.
It hurt?
Could whistle, they can come running.
I don't know what your schedule looks like this week, but if you want me to do the story about the handicap parking, I need to meet with you at some point, so.
That's important, we can do it anytime. Because people, people need to know they can get in here. Of course, it's gonna change, you know, after today's bid opening. You know, I'm sure we'll have the fence around that building and, well, it's gonna be tight. But we can still let them in over here.
That's the one o'clock, the bid?
Uh, one thirty, thirty.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you all anticipating typing or, you think you can take enough time to look at them?
I think we can take enough time to look at them myself, and we'll figure.
That's what I was, that's what I was telling Mark, I mean, we can either, you know, we may make a decision or we may not, we'll just have to look and see what passes. I mean, we can always drop back or.
Well, you can take as long as you want, I mean, for the meeting, but I didn't know, I mean, it doesn't matter, I'm just asking.
How long went in the second executive session? I think it's totally prime right now.
Get this thing locked in.
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm sort of having a wait a week.
Let's see, they entered at nine fifty and out at ten thirty-nine.
Who was in there, in the executive session?
The commissioners and their attorney.
Anybody else?
No.
I was just curious, I saw Sappington go back and I didn't know if he was going back to talk to you guys or if he was just going to use the. Deputy Sappington, John Sappington?
No, no, he didn't come to executive session.
Okay.
You know, it took so long, don't you?
No.
He went out the back door, went down to Sonic, got us a slushie.
And you didn't bring one back for the rest of us?
Well, no, they didn't, they knew we'd been at Sonic.
It's PJ, man.
Yeah, I'm telling you what.
I hear they got pretty good food over at the jail, I thought maybe he went over there for lunch or something.
No, I don't think it's long time over there yet. I know from the food bill that comes through here, they, they should have some pretty good food.
Yeah.
It's better than poor folks eat. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you have any, any records you want, Ms. Jackson?
That paper shit kind of jumps out and grabs you, don't it?
Yeah.
It's kind of a burping man.
Yeah.
Larry. What did we get?
Well, um, zoning change is Mr., um, no, we just said, my information, thanks.
One.
Okay, sorry.
Nothing?
That's the zoning from page G to C four for the continuation of.
You're looking at what you like.
I was smiling at you. Being friendly.
Smart to tell.
I'm always friendly.
Compared to what?
Board of Justice case, there's a gentleman who has the square law, who wanted to, um, build a certain building closer to his fence.
What's the other?
The other one is a zoning change from AG to R sixty-four.
I would.
The other Board of Justice case is for signage.
And here is the memorandum of agreement of Cherokee Nation. That takes a lot of signatures. You got the road.
Hello?
Community service.
Hey.
Representing the Cherokee Nation.
Um.
But, um, your master.
Yeah?
Yeah, she does.
No.
Yeah, I want to talk to you about a tab.
Have you come in?
None, oh, none, I was expecting to be this thick.
Can we move it in?
Yeah, I don't perceive this being a probation. Yeah, I don't perceive us being put in probation, we'll just have those talk about it and go from there.
You know, I wanted to rebuild the gamma goat.
What's a gamma goat?
It is a all-terrain vehicle.
If you rebuild it, I'm sure the planning permission may be given sometime.
I doubt it. What if that thing were in that option?
Not much.
Direct, electric, twice. And I need one to put my finger on it, so I can get out the pasture.
You did. See them like that at Miami, Montana? This is bigger, or does they got that?
Cecil Road.
I know, this is full of.
Oh, seventy-seven?
Knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, they'll, yeah, she'll need a resolution number, um, because it has to go to Green Gateway.
Let's see, how would this fall?
I missed one. They sure had a lot of cars.
I haven't even poured it on things, I'm gonna leave it.
Who's this one?
You know, in Sheriff's Offices, it's.
It could just be the next one.
Oh, it's my resolution number.
So there's one B's going there, stock, but I'd like to look at it.
I was gonna wipe that out, but I think it's where it has what it has mission's desire for, and I think that Sequoia Public School.
That one.
Gamma goat.
I guess I could put E O C C there and use. It's not enough space for.
Do you want me to try? Or, I mean, sorry, recycle them?
I'll take the. I might clean out my nose.
Is that the, is that a standard resolution for?
It's the one from Green Gateway. It is.
I just wanted to number on.
Went by the school the other day, perfectly the school. You know what I've discovered? If you got your hat backwards and you're wearing your pants down below. And you get out in your mom's garage, you at school. You're not against it. Pull your pants up, turn your head around, boy.
And put that in and have one of the, I don't know, who can put the resolution on? This has Sequoia Public School, this had and district.
Mm-hmm. So we have to, we have to be the ones to.
Sponsor.
Yeah.
You don't have to see if I have these store bar readers. And my extra glasses.
Gosh, I wish I could.
I was having trouble reading my bifocals, there's no line. Are you wearing bifocals? Whoa, 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 what's this?
He thinks it should be changed.
What, that said my tail line?
I got the, the progressive bifocals.
Well, yeah.
That's why sometimes you see me clear down there looking over my nose and that's when I'm looking, it's too small to see anywhere else.
Well, I, uh. I don't like them, I can't, you know, there's no line. Okay. Is that all?
It's, um, just a question.
Did you just have my thing on?
Yes.
Just to make sure.
Question for who?
Yeah, I should, uh, what it should be on the, maybe I could dismember on some, but maybe that should be for the county commissioners and that should be Sequoia Public Schools.
Yes. Switch one.
Regress that.
Uh, well, I don't believe they are, that's.
I guess that's all of them. Back on. Okay, we have a motion to pay purchase orders from all departments.
Tell who, say it.
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halm. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halm.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Meeting adjourned eleven twenty-three AM. Don't forget to be back here one thirty.
Same, back place.
Thank you.
I got that down today, man.
Here, better put it down here first.
Yeah, I, I got that.
Y A.
Four.
We're done.
Cause I had to feel nervous.
I think that Christine. Christine doesn't want to do it.
I think he comes up with that on his own, I really do, but I didn't get it same bat place, bad time.